You heard Heilmann announce that David's moving out of the city?
Yeah.
So he's replacing him, yeah?
Yeah, he did. I did hear that. But he's temporarily here.
Yeah.
Now, when Al and Bernstein was living like that, they didn't let him stay.
Right.
All right, everyone, please have a seat. I'm calling this meeting of the West Hollywood Planning Commission to Order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, this Thursday, September 6, 2018. Just a note for, before we get started here this evening, we are running an analog system as our voting, our digital system for voting and for recognizing public speakers is not working tonight. So we will be managing this manually with the help of our incomparable secretary here, David Gillig. Same process as usual, please go ahead and give speaking slips to Mr. Gillig. He will be calling out the names and we will be voting by orally. So please bear with us as we traverse upon this analog journey. The Pledge of Allegiance, who's going to be our victim this evening? Let's see, someone help me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. George Bjarasky, would you be up for giving us the Pledge of Allegiance again this evening?
(inaudible) of the United and to the Republic, which is one nation.
Thank you. David, could you please go ahead and do real call for us?
Good evening. Tonight, Vice Chair Carvalaro is absent, so the voting record will reflect that. Commissioner Hoopengartner?
Present.
Commissioner Bass?
Here.
Commissioner Elchel?
Here.
Commissioner Guy?
Here.
Chair, sorry, Chair Jones?
Here.
And Commissioner Buckner?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item for approval of the agenda.
Move it.
Great.
Do we need to vote on that?
All right. All in favor? David?
Aye.
That's fine, good.
Great, thanks.
It's unanimous.
Just so you know, David will be prompting us for the ayes and the nays, so David, if we go rogue, please do put us in our place. Item five, approval of the minutes.
Move approval?
All second. I'll let you have this one, John.
Okay, move by Commissioner Buckner, seconded by Chair Jones. Commissioner Guy?
I abstain.
Commissioner Elchel?
Here. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Bass?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
And we have, and it approves, noting Vice Chair Carvalaro absent and Commissioner Guy abstaining.
Great, thank you. We can move on to item six, public comment.
We have one, George Bjarisky.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bjarisky, please come to the podium and state your name, even though we already know it, in City of Residence for the record. You'll have three minutes. Also, just a note that we do not have our timer, our visual timer is not working, so we'll let you know when time is up. Thank you.
Are we doing three minutes or two?
Well, as per the agenda, it's three minutes each.
My name is Joe. Sorry. I want to comment on our city's attention and supposed preparation for a big rise in the population. This comes up so many times that at least as far as I'm concerned, it's almost like waiting for a tsunami of folks to cross our borders. In general, I'm going to rely on the Bureau of Census figures. We did a terrific survey one year, 2013, but, you know, in terms of progression between the decade surveys, they've got the knowledge and they've got the algorithms. The population of West Hollywood spiked enormously up to 1995, when the population was 36,000. It then declined 2010, 2011. And from 2011 until 217, it's been crawling its way up, so that the estimates for the end of 2017 are 37,000, huh? 36, 37, on an averaged annual basis, from 2011 to 2017, 1% a year. Even Beverly Hills, which has an average, say, you know, basis of 1.3% a year, doesn't pay the amount of attention that we seem to, to this forthcoming tsunami. And even our Chamber of Commerce, which would love to have a spike in population, right? Basically says that the population is relatively stable. I think this affects a lot of things. It keeps showing up until this year, the Design Review and the Commission reviewed buildings starting at a certain number of units. This year, that was increased, maybe even doubled. And when I asked the chief planner, why did this happen? Because it certainly wouldn't happen to the benefit of the planning staff. They'd have to make all the decisions because that project doesn't go through Design Review, et cetera. And I'm paraphrasing now. The answer, paraphrasing, the answer was, the City Council wants to have built as many buildings as fast as possible, and this will speed up the process.
Time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bjarisky.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public speakers, David?
No other public speakers.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to item seven, Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair and members of the Commission, John Keough, interim director for Planning and Development Services. I actually have a few things to talk about tonight. Number one is, we're doing something a little bit different. Our long-range planning division is going to be hosting a community meeting this week, or next week. It's called Pizza With Planners. The event is on September 12th. The event is to showcase to the community all the work that our long-range planning division is working on. And topics will include streetscape planning, green building updates, sustainability, resources, and then also to highlight all the zone text amendments that have been going through the Planning Commission and are going to be scheduled for the October 1st City Council meeting. So that event is on Wednesday, September 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Plummer Park's Fiesta Hall. Also, I just want to let the Commission and the public know that the city's won two awards recently on work that is of concern to the Planning Commission in sustainability. The city has earned three Beacon Spotlight Awards in recognition of key sustainability milestones to address climate change. We received a gold level award for 14% reduction of community greenhouse gas reductions. We were awarded a gold level award for 13% in energy savings, and a platinum level award for sustainability best practices. So that's always good to share on that. And then also, just last Friday, we received notice that the city has been awarded a Governor's Historic Preservation Award for 2018. The award covers the city's commercial survey and context statement that we did recently, and the city's new preservation website, so you can get to the website from the city's regular website. And then also, I just want to let the Commission know that the AKA item, the appeal of the Planning Commission's action, was on the City Council's agenda on Tuesday night, and they did uphold the Planning Commission's action. So it was a lengthy meeting for the City Council, but they ultimately upheld your action. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you. That's great news about our awards. Thank you, Mr. Keough. Any questions for John? Are we good? All right, great. Moving on to items from Commissioners, item eight. Go ahead, Commissioner Bass? Mr. Bass?
Yeah. On our consent calendar, the staff report says that the vote on that item was 6-0. It was actually a 5-1 vote. I voted against it, so I'll be voting against it again tonight.
Great. Can we note that for the record, please? Thank you for that. Any other Commissioner comments at this time? I'm going to make a little public service announcement. This is not planning related, but I hope that it will be a favor to anyone who might find themselves or befall the same fate. I had dinner at Zink the other night. I parked on Norwich to south of Melrose, and my car was broken into. There were no items visible in my car. An item of significant value was actually stolen out of my trunk. The car in front of me, incidentally, was also broken into. It's not really enough to just leave stuff in your trunk anymore and have it concealed from view. Limit what you travel with. If something happens, call the Sheriff's Department non-emergency number. I'm happy to share that with you after the meeting if you like. But I just kind of wanted to give a heads up, there's been a lot of these in West Hollywood lately, and I just want everyone to be aware, be safe, and be alert. That's my plug as a former Public Safety Commissioner. Thanks. It was on, again, Norwich to south of Melrose. Not a well-lit area, to be fair. Just noted. If there's nothing else, I'm going to move on to item 9A. It's a consent calendar item. It's on consent, so unless anybody wants to pull it, it will...
I just have a question for City Attorney. City Attorney? Since I wasn't here for this item, I'm going to abstain unless there's a recommendation otherwise. Okay.
Yeah, you can abstain from this because the item is to reflect, is to ensure that the resolution reflects the action the Commission took last time. Correct. And David, because this is on consent, we are not voting on this, correct? It's just a consent item and we won't...
No, you are voting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you need to vote that is correct.
All right.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to move the item to adopt the resolution number PC 18-1283, recommending the City Council approve the zone text amendment for commercial outdoor uses above the ground floor. We voted on this at the last meeting. A second?
We have a first and a second by Commissioner Buckner, Commissioner Hoopengartner seconded. Commissioner Elchel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bass?
No.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengartner?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
And showing Commissioner Guy abstaining, and Vice Chair Carvalaro absent. The motion passes.
All right, we will move on to our first public hearing of the evening. This is item 10A, 926 Hilldale Avenue. This is a request to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct three two-story townhome dwelling units. We will have the staff report, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Jones and members of the Commission. I'm Adrian Gaiot with the city's current planning division. On the screen is an aerial overview of the subject property, which is located on the east side of Hilldale Avenue, north of Cynthia Street. Presently, the site houses a single-family residence and is surrounded on all sides by residential uses. The proposal is a request to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct three two-story townhome units. These will be constructed on a three-unit subdivision lot. A variance being requested to reduce the front setback. In addition, the applicant requests a modification to reduce the rear yard setback by 10%. A total of six standard parking spaces are provided. Each townhome provides two parking spaces utilizing a mechanical lift located in the attached carport slash garage. The applicant has requested a variance to allow reduction in the required front setback. Approval of a variance requires specific findings that conditions exist at the site such as unusual size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings that deny the owner privileges enjoyed by similarly situated properties. The front setback for this site is the average of the setback of the property to the north and south. The structure to the north has a setback of 18 feet, and the structure to the south has a setback of 19.5 feet. Averaging these two adjacent properties as required by the zoning ordinance would yield a setback of 18 foot, nine inches. The applicant has requested a variance to permit an 11-foot setback. There are a number of properties located on Hilldale Avenue in the same block as the subject property with front yard depths that are substantially less than the two properties that are but the subject property. Because all properties on the same block have front yard depths that vary greatly from approximately one foot to 24 feet, a lot that happens to be located between two lots with two of the greatest front yard depths is denied a front yard depth similar to that enjoyed by many properties located close by on the same block. Additionally, the subject property's narrow lot width of 45 feet and the site's topography downsloping away from Hilldale Avenue with an additional cross slope down from north to south are conditions that add significantly to the challenges of developing the project site otherwise constrained by code-required front yard depth. Therefore, conditions exist that would necessitate a variance from the zoning code. The variance request for the front yard setback reduction is necessary to physically accommodate the townhome-type development dwelling units and related green space and better fulfill the intent of the city's general plan and zoning ordinance. In addition, this reduction merely puts the project in alignment with and allows the applicant to enjoy the same rights already granted to the many property owners located close by on the same block. A modification is also being requested to reduce the rear setback from 15 feet to 13 foot, six inches. The proposed project offers a unique approach to residential site planning by providing three detached single-family townhome dwelling units, each with its own accurate private garden space. It requires a minor modification to the standard that does not impact adjacent properties. In summary, staff feels that this project reflects a high level of architectural quality and consideration of massing, incorporates sustainable design principles, is complementary to the context of the neighborhood, and meets the intent of the development standards with the exception of the variance and modification. Staff is recommending approval of the project. Thank you, and I'm here to answer the questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Again, this would be limited to just questions for staff.
I do.
Sure.
Okay, so this is just one parcel, right, that has been subdivided into three separate parcels, so that each unit, it's not really a condominium, they're each separate units, is that correct?
Correct.
There won't be a condominium plan or anything?
Correct.
All right, just a question.
Turn on my mic. My question is, you mentioned several of the circumstances at this site, but can you please, the variance requires us to find exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions. Can you tell me what's exceptional or extraordinary about this site different from those others that surround it?
So, in terms of exceptional, it's a unique condition for this block, for this location in the sense that it happens to be next to properties that are setback further back from the rest of the block. That being the case, their setback would be 18.9 feet compared to the block, which is the average of 11 feet. So that distance would lose if they're, it wouldn't ask for the variance.
So, I have a related question. There is a property across the street under construction. What is the setback for that?
Hold on.
So it's a new construction?
I didn't work on that project, but based on the setbacks of the neighboring properties, I would presume at least five feet.
That particular property's been under construction for quite a while.
It has.
Not going very fast.
Right.
My second question relates to item 6.6. This seems to be a new addition to the resolutions that we've seen in the past number of months, requiring the applicant to dedicate easements for public street and sidewalk purposes necessary to ensure combined minimum width of 10 feet for sidewalk and parkway along the project frontages on Hilldale. The plans that we are reviewing tonight don't seem to reflect that requirement. And my question to you, and I guess also to legal, we're putting in a requirement here that would substantially change the look and feel of these plans. And so, chicken, egg, can you speak to that?
So this condition came from Public Works, they're requiring a 10-foot sidewalk that would allow for a parkway and easement. The plans, right, do not reflect this condition. This came in as part of the resolution going forward for the packet. The applicant has spoke to Public Works as far as what it means to the current design. Public Works would require the applicant, or ask the applicant, to move the wall that's there now five feet back so it'd be out of the easement. The applicant is trying to work with the Public Works engineer to see if there's a way to keep the wall where it's at, but that's still up in the air.
Follow-up question? And just for clarity, the widening that overlaps with the front yard setback, correct?
Sorry, I missed the question.
So, the additional however many feet that they have to widen the sidewalk by overlaps with the front yard setback, so would that change where...
Correct. It would overlap. It would not push the property line back.
So ultimately, it's just the front yard that might look a little different, and it sounds like the applicant's trying to work with the engineering guys to figure that out.
It would be the wall that's currently shown on the plans would just be setback behind the easement.
Understood.
On item on 6.11, my new pet peeve is this storm, the water, underground water that's being pumped out onto the streets and keeps flowing because of the water table. Will you explain again why you don't require them to pump it into tanks and take it away rather than just let it go onto the street, which causes some issues sometimes with mosquitoes, et cetera?
We did investigate that in the past, and it turned out that that was less environmentally friendly than doing the way we're doing it now because of all of the emissions from the trucks and all of the different transport that that would require. So I believe that it was investigated and not moved forward on because it was more impactful to the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? We should do disclosures before the applicant's presentation. Sue, I'm going to start with you.
None. I visited the site. I have none.
I visited the site and met with the applicant, with the architect onsite.
I have none.
I visited the site and spoke with the architect on the phone.
Thank you. With that, we will have our applicant's presentation. We'll have 10 minutes, followed by public comment and then rebuttal.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners and staff. I'm Joe Bernstein from Sapphire Construction and Development, representing the project applicant. And with me is Rick Abramson of Workplace Studio Architecture, the project architect. Adrian has already described the project details, so I'd just like to give some quick background now, and then Rick will talk about the project in a bit more depth. And of course, then we're happy to answer any questions or address any issues. So just very quickly, as you know, the R2 Zone allows for an apartment building to be built on the subject site, but rather than build a solid rectangular box, the owners and Rick knew that this site and the neighborhood warranted a very thoughtful design, and Rick did work very hard to achieve a lot of attributes, including regarding site planning, sustainability, and environmental responsiveness that are in harmony with the city's general plan. And the design overall, I'd like to point out, was deemed exemplary by the city's urban design consultant. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick to discuss the challenges of the site and how he worked with those constraints in designing this project and achieving exemplary design status. Thank you.
David, is there a clock up there? I don't see it.
No, I have it here. You have 8 minutes, 50 seconds.
That's right, we're going analog tonight. Good evening, Commissioners. Rick Abramson, City of West Hollywood. I'm also wanting to introduce Paul Lewis from Cortlandt Studio as our landscape architect, if there's any questions that you may have on that end as well. So as Joe just mentioned, there's a number of objectives we have in looking at any project, and... and as the years go by, they get more and more challenging. You know, we started out with a planning and zoning code, building code, fire code. You draw, you design a project and you're done. Now we've added to that a green building code, a climate action plan, a low-impact development ordinance, and energy code. And now we have all these goals and aspirations that are getting more and more difficult to integrate. And yet, through design, we're trying to achieve as much as we can. So we have certain goals that the city has outlined in their general plan about diversity of housing types and balancing the mix of land uses, staying within scale of the neighborhood, and importantly, really dealing with global climate change, which we heard about in a word tonight that, you know, the city's being recognized. And so how we build and how we especially integrate housing becomes really important to all these goals. And so when we were looking at this, typically, the first thing one would do is do an underground parking lot. You would take your walls to the property line, you would build an underground, what would you call it, underground space for parking, and then you have a nice slab that we build on top of. We were looking at a different pattern, a different way of living in this city, a two-story compact home type of approach, where we would have a cadence of a garden space with each unit, on-grade, plant canopy trees, grow vegetables, have indoor/outdoor spaces, something that perhaps would be a different way that we could think about going forward, yet still adding the density that is of interest. So by shifting the project slightly forward with a reduced front space and slightly to the rear with a reduced rear space, it opened up an opportunity for a garden and a green space so that we now have light and air on three, whoops, on three sides, which becomes really important. As I was mentioning, on the left is what would typically be a solution here, where you could do a box to the setbacks, you integrate some green space, perhaps in some planters on a slab, and we would, you know, find a way to deal with the permeable requirements and off you go. But instead, this other typology really shows that there's going to be some potential benefits that we'd like to talk about. So in terms of the extraordinary circumstances that were brought up earlier, we are basically surrounded by an R4B zone, which is a four-story, 45-foot zone, which also importantly, in a higher-density zone, only requires a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. So there are already parcels on the street that have a very small setback, and in fact, first entering the street at Hilldale, they're virtually zero. The buildings are almost on the property line. So it's a very strange, unusual, dead-end street with an eclectic series of buildings and varying setbacks. So we, we were looking at some specific opportunities to enhance sort of the quality of living and the responsiveness to the site. So the first being, from a site planning and organization standpoint, separating it into three townhome dwellings, as Commissioner Buckner was asking. These are independent units, ground to the sky, so nobody living on top of you, and each having their own garden. This also allowed us to encase the entire site in a green space with plantings, gardens, canopy trees, what have you. We also looked very closely at how these buildings are going to operate and function in a most energy-efficient way. So the individual units have been carefully crafted with concrete at the base for a thermal mass with a rain screen, which I just actually completed on my own office, which is performing incredibly well in terms of energy reduction in demand. Other elements like sunscreens and permeable pavers contribute to a overall palette that we think are going to be the highest performing and allowed us to achieve a high-achieving green status under our green building requirements. In terms of responding to the environment, there are a number of things that we did that I think are worth pointing out, the most important of which, in my mind, is allowing each unit to breathe naturally with the environment. So beyond just large windows and cross ventilation, which we're used to, by this patterned design, we've allowed each unit to have three exposures to the outside, very unusual in multifamily housing, so that you can get cross ventilation, daylight, both from the perimeter and then from above through skylighting. And then each of the units has a stair tower which doubles up as a thermal chimney, allowing all the hot air to passively exhaust, reducing the need for air conditioning and hopefully eliminating the need for air conditioning to even be used on most days of the year. That perimeter I mentioned earlier also allows us to get actual tree canopies, which is a big part of our general plan land use goals, to reduce heat island effect. And on the south perimeter, there was a question about the stormwater. We've actually integrated a bioswale to capture the stormwater runoff and allow it to percolate down to the south corner. This is a very steep, steep sloping site. Say that 10 times fast. So it's got not only a cross slope but a down slope, which makes it a little bit more tricky, and this individual unit approach allowed us to terrace. The front, there was some discussion about the easement, and I will clarify that perhaps at the end, but what I wanted to make comment about was that we went extra carefully to work with the city's urban designer, our planner, to make a very powerful and pedestrian-friendly frontage, something that when one walks after work at the end of the day, walking their dogs, strolling, what have you, that this is actually a thoughtful amenity where we pulled back what would typically be a wall at the property line. We integrated plantings both in, in front of the wall and behind the wall. We've created a little portal, a view portal that looks into a water feature. There's even a little bench if you want to sit for a moment, but sized in a way that it's difficult for someone to lie down and sleep there, but it becomes a respite, you know, for the pedestrian. We have a sculptural gate kind of entry. So there was a lot of thought going into that front five feet, which as, from an easement standpoint, we're fine if it's dedicated as an easement. An easement just is there for future need should at some point the city decide that all the properties need that five feet for a green belt that they're going to put in 30, 40, 80 years from now. So we're fine with the easement as is. What we would like to request the commission consider is that we can improve it in the front with the condition that should that future green belt be needed, that that could be demolished and taken away, and that's fine. We think it can work in both ways, where the easement works and the design works. But adding up all the things that I've talked about, the site planning, the, the building performance, the environmental responsiveness, and being very mindful of an urban design pattern, we get a sustainable solution which has a great deal of thought that's been put into it about how we might live in the future in this type of density. So with that, I think we will close. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about the front yard reduction or the easement or any other aspects of the property if needed. Just one last shot of the, the rear and the drive court, and with that, we'll take questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abramson. Any questions for the architect or the landscape architect?
Just one.
Go ahead.
I see that you submitted a plan with 91 green points.
Right.
And you can see where a lot of those are here in your design. But I, normally when people go for a full 90 green points, they ask for something in return. And I'm curious as to you, I don't see anything in the staff report as to what bonuses or benefits or variances you, you have elected to ask for, given your green point status.
Mm-hmm. Did you want me to answer that?
I can. I can.
Or not.
Adrian may need to clarify this a bit, but I believe that, you know, we're kind of neither fish nor fowl in terms of being a single-family or multifamily. And we believe this is a, you know, basically a single-family project, three single-family dwellings. But we do understand that it can be considered, development-wise, in terms of the master lot, it has some multifamily aspects to it, and I believe that those points were used to deal with open space. And Adrian can give detail on that if I'm correct about that. No? Great. That was some discussion. I guess it has been dealt with and that, that it's worked out. So then we would, two things. One is that it might be nice, I think we're conditioned for 91 points. It might be nice to say that we are conditioned to either 90 or to whatever that standard is to achieve that, that green standard rather than specify specifically 91 points. And then certainly, if it could be taken into consideration towards our variance request, then?
As an incentive, as a green, high-achieving green incentive, yes, that would, I think it would be great if that would be part of the consideration for, for going beyond.
The variance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the front, front yard reduction.
I, I don't have a question, but ready to talk.
I was going to say, we can, we can discuss after we've, we've had all the public comment, but if there are no other questions for the applicant, we'll move on to the, the public comment period. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are going to go ahead and move into the public comment portion of the public hearing. David, I'm going to toss this over to you.
First public speaker is George Bierwski, followed by Edward Levin.
Again, once you come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. You will have, was it two or three minutes? How many speakers do we have, David?
We have two.
Oh, okay, yeah. You'll have the full three minutes. It's no problem. Oh, okay, we have a third. It's fine. We'll still have three minutes. Go ahead, George.
I'd, oh, sorry. George Bierwski reside WeHo. I'd like to support this building. I think, I think it's a very fine architectural design for the outside, particularly on the street side and the south side. And that's not just in terms of articulation. Sometimes articulation is taken as the end-all and be-all. It, it, to me, it has a very nice sort of daring sense of balance by putting a lot of detail on the right side and then leaving a block on the left side, which I think adds to, to, you know, sort of passerby's interest. In addition, while the colors are the, seem to be the same familiar white, stucco, brown, and gray, in this case, the brown and grays are very muted shades, and they, they don't define the building, this cube, that cube. In addition, I was trying to get through this thing fast, but I think it, the building uses actual wood. I mean, like, you know, real wood. And it provides for a lot of, I mean, like, sun slants, a lot of stuff that, that I haven't seen. You know, I'm not going to talk much about setbacks and so on. It's a two-story building. You know, I think it would fit into any neighborhood the way it is. How much time do I have, anyone?
One minute.
One minute. You know, when I saw it, my, my eyes almost filled with tears, given the types of buildings that have been appearing and will appear in my community. I may be wrong, but it might be that this building is on the good side of the Fairfax tracks, and, you know, so that's why more attention is paid to it, because there might be public comments, stuff like that. I talked about population before. East-West Hollywood is exactly why this, this sort of attention to the coming wave of population is so, is so miscued. That whole policy, in the wrong instances, in a lot of instances, leads to build them fast and pack them in. I haven't seen a building with a floor plan that calls for three bedrooms, as I guess our city doesn't believe in families.
Time is up. Thank you.
Let me just finish. And that's also reflected by the size of the units that can be built and the size of the, of the rooms that can be built.
Thank you. David.
Edward Levin.
Thank you. Edward Levin, resident of West Hollywood. Thank you, Commissioner. I appear before you a great deal, I know, very rarely ever to speak one way or another about a project, but I'm here to support this project. The fact that it requires variances and modifications seems to me less a, a, a function of the project itself as it is an indictment of our current zoning ordinance. This shouldn't require a lot of deliberation for a variance over the front yard. This con, the site context is, is highly unusual because of the, the proximity there are for the different buildings on the streets, but honestly, we need to change the zoning to allow for a definable setback for, for all of the zones so that we're not in this ridiculous setback averaging. In this case, the, the building doesn't go full width across, it, it doesn't go set, side yard setback to side yard setback. It has a very low impact in far as its, its profile in the front. The modification's also reasonable in that it's not, generally when you're asked to reduce setbacks, it's to increase lot coverage for the building. In this case, it's not to increase the coverage, it's to rationalize it. It's to allow for a better pattern, a better development, and in this case, to allow for one that doesn't have a subterranean garage, it has real site permeability in the best way possible, which is to not dig. Similarly, exemplary design, again, I'm glad to see that it's been defined as good design, as something capable of being held up as an exemplar rather than extraordinary. The idea that we could require a two-story building to set, to set back the second floor six feet because we think that has somehow has a better design impact is just absurd, even more so in this case, where we have a building that's elegant, that's well-designed and well-detailed. I think it makes, it's, it's really quite extraordinary as a pattern of development for the city, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Zach Means.
Hi. Thank you to you all for having this meeting, and thank you for your nice presentation. The building looks great.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name and city of residence?
Oh, Zachary Means. I live on Hilldale as well.
Thank you.
But thank you for doing a nice job on this. It looks good, and I've lived there for 15 years. I'm not sure that you all went and visited the site, some didn't. This is on a cul-de-sac. It's not on Cynthia Street, it's not on Sweets, or it's not on King's Road, it's on a little hamlet. I've lived there 15 years. I can tell you, being on a cul-de-sac, it's very private, very quiet. So this will add three new homes where there is only one. This week, there were some testing, some sort of tests done on the street, so we only could park on one side of the street. I have private parking, but I know I have housekeepers, gardeners, staff, we all do. Not all, but most people do. We have 15 parking spaces on the street from Cynthia Street to the top of the cul-de-sac on that side of the street. Across the street, there's fewer parking spaces for the public or the residents. So we couldn't park on one side of the street, and we can't park on one side of the street for street cleaning as well. I know the impact it has there. So since you're going ahead with this, what is going to happen with all the construction workers and their trucks and their, everybody who has to come and when you have to take away parking spaces from the residences? Is there going to be a, another parking area, like up on Sunset, where all this, all the workmen can park and not fill our street? It's, it's, I don't know, there's 10 homes from Cynthia up, something like that. It's not a big street, there's no par, it's, there's, it's already limited parking. There's no parking there. Also, next door, we're at 928 Hilldale. It's the Spanish Villas. Some of you have seen it. This building seems to be taller than that. It's on a hill. Hilldale is on a hill. And so this is lower, this site is lower than the 928, yet the building seems higher. So did they change the height? So did they change the height restrictions in that neighborhood? Because that will block all three of the townhouses' views at 928 Hilldale. Also, you mentioned that there was going to be a setback variance on the north side, which is next door to the 928 Hilldale Villas. That would decrease that. That would, they're not gonna have any light or any airspace if you come closer to them. So I urge you to consider keeping it, whatever the required setback is, because it's just gonna be too dark. I believe that the height on that is higher than the 928 Hilldale. But thank you, was that my time? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
No more public speakers.
Thank you, David. So I'm gonna go ahead and, oh, sorry, there's a rebuttal. We'll let you rebut, just this once. You'll have five minutes.
Okay. Quickly, again, just regarding 928, the comments, I think, from Zach at 928. Construction parking is conditioned in the proposed resolutions. The height is per zone, the side yard is per zone as well. And, you know, one of the features I think possibly gets overlooked is that with the courtyard in the interior of the site, that also opens up light and air to lots to the north of us, 928, as well as to the south of us, which is unusual on a site or a project of this size to be able to do that in the middle of a lot. Very quickly also, I just wanted to mention about variances. Sometimes folks think of exceptional or extraordinary in the lay sense being extremely rare, but aside from the fact that that's not the actual definition of either exceptional or extraordinary in the variance that first finding, it refers to something that is out of the ordinary. And also, the language in there goes on to say, "which does not generally apply," not "which doesn't apply anywhere else," but "which generally doesn't apply to surrounding properties." So it's important to remember that language, and in fact, we think our conditions to a planning, land use nerd actually are quite remarkable in terms of being between the only, you know, the two deepest setbacks, also having a 45-foot width and a slope, and being kind of nestled on that non-continuous street within, you know, our four properties. And also, 917, the new construction, we believe, on the other side of the street you're asking about, is somewhere between a 10 and 11-foot setback, and I think, and planning may know this, staff may know this, there may be a retaining wall within that five foot. But the setback itself looks to be about 10 to 11 feet.
Rick?
You have three minutes. Two quick clarifications for Zach. One is that the north side, there is no request for a reduction, and we're actually beyond the setback requirements. I think the ground level, we're as far back as close to seven feet, and up above, I think we're at five feet eight. So we're actually further away on the north to create that light. And then importantly, the other thing is that when we were first looking at citing this project, we did strategically relocate the driveway from the north to the south. What that does is it combines the two driveways on the south side and creates the opportunity for the potential of an additional parking space on the street. So we did take that into consideration in looking at Hilldale and realizing that it is, you know, like West Hollywood streets, it's difficult for parking. And so we set out to see if we could actually improve the condition by building this building. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of this public hearing and open, go ahead, David.
I think this is a wonderful project. It came through design review. I agree with Edward Levin. I think the fact that this has to come to us speaks to the inefficiencies in our zoning code. And that's pretty much all I have to say about it. I think, you know, it's a very thoughtful design. I think you had another project like this, it was a fourplex on the east side, where you used the light wells and used it for air and circulation. And again, you're, you know, very, very thoughtful, especially given everything going on in the world. So I would like to make a motion to approve the project, the staff recommendation as presented.
I would second.
Okay. Does anyone else wanna make any, we want any comments about this?
I would like to make a comment, too. Comments?
Commissioner Buckner or Commissioner Bass, I'll let you fight it out.
We'll fight it out. I'll do it. I really love this building. I think it's very well thought out, and I don't have any problems with the variance or the modification that request, particularly for this site. I think that, as usual, this architect has paid a lot of attention to detail to make a building that really is well thought out, well designed. I think it's beautiful, and I'm looking forward to seeing it developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is a beautiful project. I think it's, it is exceptional. I, it's one of the first ones that we've been asked to consider exemplary design that I actually thought fit all definitions of exemplary design. And so I have no problem with that. The modification is very straightforward, I'm thrilled with that. And to be quite frank, I think the front yard setback is exactly what it should be in this project. That being said, the variance findings require us to find exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to this property that don't generally apply to the surrounding properties, and I can't find that. And the one that came up in the applicant's presentation is that the R4 properties around that have a seven-foot setback, but the same condition, same sentence even, says, "within the same zoning district." So that's not something I think that we can consider, that zones nearby have a different setback. I couldn't agree more with Ed Levin, that the fact that we have to find these exceptional or extraordinary circumstances for a setback that makes sense on the front yard have to come to us, and we have to find those. I don't find those, and so I can't, I can't vote that we found that if I don't see it. And so even though I want to support this project, I want to support the setback, if I'm told in our code that I have to find, have those findings and I don't see them, that's a hang-up for me. I think, to borrow a phrase when I kind of talked about this with the city attorney before the meeting, but, you know, we need to, we're taking kind of a Band-Aid approach. If we, you know, the average on that street might warrant this setback, but our code says we have to look at the properties next door, or we have to find a variance. So I think that we need to have a policy conversation about whether the setback policy is correct, and I said I was gonna borrow a phrase and then I forgot it, so that's why I didn't use it. But it is kind of a Band-Aid approach that we're taking. Every time we don't think the setback from the averages works, well, we'll just grant a variance and do something different. But again, it says exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions. I walked the property because I thought, well, maybe the topography will do it, but the whole street is similarly situated, so that doesn't create something different. The setbacks, you know, yes, there are various setbacks along the street, but to give you an example, if we move the setback on this one, not only does it change the setback on this property, but then if the property to the south at 916 Hilldale, it would change there, just by granting this one and then building it, it would change their setback from being 21.4 to 17.5. So there's this ripple effect, that it actually changes others as well. So do I think it should be that setback? Yes. Do, am I thrilled that the green points are being met and exceeded in this project? And would I like to consider those to grant the variance? Absolutely. But the code doesn't say we can consider the green points in granting a variance. Could they get a green point incentive, and could I vote for that? Yes. I don't know if they could get a front yard setback. I don't, didn't read the code and not familiar enough with it to say off the top of my head, but that's not what they're asking for. So I want to vote for this project, but I won't be voting for this project, because I can't make those findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Altshuler?
Well, I think we've been looking for a definitive definition of extraordinary or exemplary architecture for quite some time, and this happens, in my opinion, to be it. It doesn't satisfy our quest for the verbiage and the language to point it out, but I congratulate the developer and the architect for putting this forward. I think that in order to make the variance, or the variance request viable, I agree with Adam that there has to be some kind of positive findings according to the code, but I think we can make those findings in this situation for two reasons. Number one, this is not exactly an apartment building, and it's not exactly in R3 and R4. You have three single-family homes here, and it's kind of a new concept, or a different concept. And I think that fact is a partial reason for the variance, and I also point out the fact that it seems that Hilldale, at that point, is somewhat similar in terms of elevation and rise, but Hilldale from Cynthia to the dead end at the school is an uphill, and I think that puts this property at somewhat of a disadvantage to the rest of the properties below it and somewhat of an advantage to some of the properties above it. So I think between the fact that you perhaps could use the green points for a concession or an incentive would work for us, and I do think that the elevation and the rise in the street should be able to work for the finding.
Thank you, Commissioner Altshuler. Commissioner Hoopan Gardner?
Thank you. Yes, I would agree with my colleagues. This is extraordinarily beautiful, and certainly in context of many of the other things that we've seen. And frankly, from environmentally sustainable perspective, I think this frankly should be used as a how-to example for all the projects that come to our city. I mean, in college, professors used to put papers in the library to say, "this is how you should write, and this is how you should do it," in my opinion. The project is neighborhood-friendly, it's environmentally sustainable, I love the use of the chimneys and the bioswales, but importantly, I think, is the concept of the green space, and green space that actually is permeable, plantable, green space. And to achieve it in multiple zones, to create air and light throughout the building instead of one of these big boxes that we continually are faced with, achieves exactly the intent of the setback. And so to divert some of that setback into the additional green space, to me, achieves exactly the intent of the setbacks in the first place. Does it follow the letter of the law? No. And that does concern me, and I would like to talk to legal about that, which is one of the reasons I brought up the green points, because this is an extremely high-achieving building that's done everything right that we've ever asked of a developer and an architect. And to go to the last limit on this setback thing, I agree with Commissioner Bass. It's a slippery slope, you know, the next project, next project, et cetera. So I'm looking to legal for some guidance on this, but I would hate to penalize a project that has gone to such extraordinary lengths to achieve just about every possible thing that we could ever wish and dream for in a project.
Okay, a couple, couple things in response to that. I think it's a fair point that if you keep seeing requests for these variances, you probably need to have a policy conversation on the setback rules generally. So I think that's something that you can talk about during commissioner comments and come up with how you wanna handle that. With respect to this particular variance, it's always a discretionary action. It's up to the commission to decide whether or not you can make those findings. Staff has put forth evidence before you to support a legally defensible variance based on unique circumstances of this particular parcel. So as long as you agree with the evidence that staff has put in the code, or, I'm sorry, put in the proposed resolution, you can make the findings for a legally defensible variance here, given the unique circumstances of this particular property, where it's situated, how it is, the different setbacks of all the neighboring properties, all those factors, the factors that Commissioner Altshuler raised. There's a variety of factors here, and if you put that in your mind and think that it creates unusual, exceptional circumstances related to this property that treat it differently than other properties, you have the basis for a legally defensible variance.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions or comments? Ellen?
I would like to request that we modify our motion to have direct staff to bring back a resolution which incorporates proposed findings for the variance.
But I believe there are legally defensible findings in the, for the variance in the staff report as it stands right now, correct?
But there are some comments that we made that should perhaps be added.
You'd like to add more justifications? Well, let's see if we can do that. So the justification, it's hard to see the justification in the resolution right now, looks at the setbacks on neighboring properties, that there are a number of properties located on Hilldale in the same block as a subject property with front yard depths that are substantially less than the two properties, so this property is situated in a different manner than other properties. There's a, the front yard depths vary greatly, and it just happens, so the circumstances surrounding the location of this property happen to be located next to two properties that have larger setbacks, which treats this one differently than other properties that may be developing and get a larger setback. There's a narrow lot width, and topography sloping down away from Hilldale with a cross slope create exceptional conditions that add significantly to the challenges of developing.
It does include the topography.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Does include the topography.
Yes. The draft findings do include the topography, and making the case for extraordinary circumstances surrounding this particular parcel as compared to the rest of the parcels.
And if we throw in the green points?
A setback reduction is not the type of incentive that's offered under the Green Building Points Program at the moment. I think a point that Commissioner Hoopan Gardner raised was that it's really a transfer of the setback to different areas of the property, which creates more green space. So why don't we add a statement to that effect? That it's not just eliminating part of the setback, it's transferring it on the property.
And is it, would it be, would it be advantageous to add the fact that these are three separate lots in appearance and in actuality?
I believe that's also currently in the staff report, is it not?
Adrian said that's already in there. It's a unique type of proposal. Another factor to consider when approving a variance is to deviate to the minimum extent necessary to accomplish the goal of what you're trying to doing. And so I think also Commissioner Hoopan Gardner mentioned that as well, that it's to the minimum extent they need, and it's just being transferred around the particular properties, distributed. The distribution is unusual.
So we can do it?
If the majority of you agree with the proposed findings and as we've added, then yes, you can, then you can.
I believe that the variance is appropriate considering the exceptional circumstances. Had this property be one lot different and not next, between these two other properties that have the greatest setback for the street, except for one, which is 24 feet, it would not be a problem. So based upon all the properties on that block, I think it's pretty.
Commissioner Bass, with this amendment, would you be amenable to changing your vote? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I would like to build consensus on this.
Look, I would love to vote for this. I just, I just don't think it meets, it meets the threshold. And I've gone back and forth, I've had a lot of heartache about this, and I wouldn't, this is one of those where I hope the outcome is different than the way I'm gonna vote, sort of thing. If I was sitting out there, I'd hope that, I'd hope that this would pass, but I just- If I was sitting out there, I'd hope that, I'd hope that this would pass, but I just...
You're a strict constructionist, huh?
I should be nominated for the Supreme Court, I suppose.
Yes, exactly.
Except I don't have a lot degree, but, so maybe that's why I'm, maybe that's why I'm wrong on this one, but that's where I'm at. Since I have the mic, I know you haven't spoken yet, Chair, but I missed something in my notes that I'd like to highlight, if that's all right at this point?
Sure, I believe Commissioner Hoopengartner has it, but we can...
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, to your point.
To Zach's comments about construction vehicles, I want to let you know that there's a condition in here, 10.5, that says that no worker vehicles can park on any West Hollywood street, so they can't park around the corner. The construction crews have to park elsewhere and come into the site some other way. So if you see them parking there, call code enforcement and they'll have a sign on their property that tells you who you can call. And our city's code enforcement's really responsive to that. Yeah, vehicles, 10.5, vehicles belonging to independent contractors, subcontractors or employees.
It's also addressed at 5.6Q, R and S.
Okay, with that in mind, just one thing in the, in the resolution, condition 6.8G says that they can get an encroachment permit for worker parking, which conflicts with 10.5. So I'd ask that we strike 6.8G, just to be consistent and address those concerns.
G, 6.8G?
6.8G is on page 13.
So you want to strike G? Is that what you said?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney. So Lauren, are you in a position where you can read back the changes for the revised motion? Or do we want to continue conversation and we can come back to you?
I drafted some language to add to the findings, but I didn't catch Commissioner Bass's. 6.9G.
6.5G. While we're striking and adding, can I get our weather-based controller back in 7.5? Since this is the greenest of the green of the green, green, green buildings.
So would the language be automatic weather-based controllers?
It's adding the weather-based in there.
Okay.
I think Mr. Abramson would probably agree with that.
Okay, so language that I was thinking of adding actually to finding B could say something like additional factors that put the project in parity with other similarly situated parcels are the unusual proposal for three townhomes on the site and the distribution of the open space to other parts of the property and the fact that the product does not utilize a green building incentive.
Great, so we do have a revised motion on the floor that includes the language that Lauren just read back to us in addition to striking 6.8G and 7.5, or adding 7.5, rather.
Adding the words "weather-based" to 7.5. And I believe those are the only changes proposed.
As it stands right now, that's correct.
Since I'm the motion maker, I'm amenable to these changes, just FYI. I think Commissioner Altshuler seconded, or?
I seconded.
Are you amenable to these changes?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hoopengartner, do you have any more comments?
No, let me just check. Sorry. No, I think this achieves the green that we all want and have written in our code that most people try and get around and these people are actively trying to achieve. So I couldn't be happier.
One item about the setback, I'm not clear on what the motion has, the motion has drafted right now. Are we requiring them to move the, to move the, to move the wall back at this time? I know we're, they're going to have to record the easement as far as engineers is concerned, but are they going to have to move their, the wall back since it was...
The committee won't have to remain and it's up to the Director of Public Works to determine where that wall would go.
Let me just add a little bit of clarity. In the code in 192160, it says the combined sidewalk and parkways in all zoning districts shall be a minimum of 10 feet, except as otherwise provided by the Sunset specific plan or when determined infeasible or undesirable by the Director of Transportation and Public Works.
So it's not in our discretion?
So it's unusual for a term like that to be in the zoning ordinance, but I read that to say that it's the Director of Public Works that determines whether or not it's infeasible or undesirable. And here, Public Works has recommended to keep the condition in.
Understood.
Okay, so my only question there is, and I, you know, walk this street and this is, as one of the public comments was, this is a very, this is a cul-de-sac, this is a dead-end street, dead ends into the school. And it's, it's not a trafficked street in terms of pedestrians. And the building immediately to the north of this project is brand-new. And while the building to the south might become a recent, new development, it seems very odd to create one 10-foot section of sidewalk in the middle of a street where there's no hope of it being repeated anywhere else in the next however many decades. And so while I'm all for the 10-foot sidewalks in concept, and we discussed it in the context of a project recently on Fairfax, et cetera, et cetera, in this particular context, it doesn't seem to make any logical, rational use because you're going to go from a skinny four-foot, five-foot sidewalk to all of a sudden just a one building width of 10 feet and then back to another five feet and it's only a block-long section of street.
And it's a cul-de-sac and the only people walking there are going to be the neighbors that live there probably.
And it's a school at the other end that's not going anywhere.
Right.
I mean, I had an idea too, but you can go first.
Can we, can we make a suggestion or a recommendation to the head director of engineering to consider the applicant's proposal of recording the easement and offering to have that wall demolished when?
If and when?
If and when, the neighboring properties also.
Right, and I also think we could mirror the language in the code and the condition where it says unless determined infeasible or undesirable by the Director of Public Works. So you put the condition in and then we say unless determined infeasible or undesirable by the Director of Public Works. So they have a little bit of flexibility to reconsider your recommendation.
That way they can build it as-is.
Commissioner Altshuler has a question?
How long has that easement been in effect?
This requirement? It looks like since 2, oh, I'm not sure because it was in the old zoning code before we redid the zoning code in 2001, so I think it's been in...
So at least...
At least since 2001 and likely before that.
Over 15 years?
Yes.
And there's been no indication that we need, that we're aware of exercising that easement at all?
Not for street widening purposes that we know in the city.
And I think we should try to find a way to put in the language that would assist the developer in this.
I normally speak up against these walls, but I think that that's a defining feature on this particular project. And for this particular street, I think it's appropriate. So, yeah, we should, we should help the developer in that one.
And it's one of the first projects with actually a bench.
So I could add, I'll keep the condition in and I could add unless determined undesirable or infeasible by the Director of Public Works.
Is there any way to...
And as part of the process, perhaps just do a small evaluation as to whether or not the easement should be vacated. It was, it was done on Huntley.
I don't think there's currently an easement. I think the requirement is that the developer grant an easement to the city.
New easement.
A new easement to the city.
Yes, that's correct.
So I think with the, so if, you know, I'm okay with the applicant's proposal of granting the easement and offering to, maybe as part of that easement in the language in there, we could say, again, this is up to the Director of Engineering, but you know, when the time comes where, you know, the neighbors on both sides are also doing demolishing or whatever, whatever they think is reasonable.
So we could add as part of your recommendation, a recommendation to the Director of Public Works that it would be reasonable to let the wall stay where it is. If they grant the underlying easement, but for design purposes, the wall could stay where it is.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm amenable to that as well. I don't really have anything to add. I think everyone's kind of said, I'm generally in agreement. I actually think that there are, we have a number of findings to adequately support the variance. I also, you know, in considering this particular project, there are a few things that I thought were noteworthy, especially because I think maybe, at least since I've been on commission with the exception of Mr. Abramson's other project that was somewhat similar to this on, over on Vista, which were again, separate townhomes, so it's not a condominium situation, so to speak. You know, the experience that, you know, neighbors on either side will have with these structures now are markedly different from what they would be were this just one large kind of envelope or one connected, you know, multifamily building. So I also want to give due consideration to, you know, the positioning of each of these buildings on the site. And again, to echo Commissioner Hoopengartner's comments about the fact that this, this really does set us, you know, I think a standard for what we like to see in the city. And I'm, I am amenable to supporting the revised motion with the changes that we've discussed here too for. So unless anyone takes issue, I think we're ready to call the question.
Commissioner Guy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengartner?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner Bass?
No.
Commissioner Altshuler?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
And the motion passes, noting Commissioner Bass voting no. Vice Chair Carver Laurel absent.
The resolutions the planning commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you. Before we move on to item 10B, 1040 North La Brea Avenue, we're going to take a quick five-minute break.
Hi stranger.
I haven't seen you since I drank your beer.
(laughter)
Excellent, ready to go?
(inaudible).
I haven't done this in years.
Yeah, he's constantly busy. He's got lots of people on his side.
No, like three. I don't know, I don't know what those people are doing. Oh, I got three.
Well, four.
Four, four skippers.
I'll be up at Gubby Hole.
Okay.
(laughter)
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 ...floor six through nine, including two units per floor. The configuration avoids the residential units intermingling with the hotel units. The units are approximately 1,200 square feet each. Seven of the apartments include one bedroom and one unit includes a two-bedroom. The applicant has confirmed that all the residential units will be leased on a long-term basis pursuant to the municipal code. This section of the code requires all dwelling units to be for long-term occupancy. As such, no part of any dwelling in the project may be used as corporate housing or short-term rentals. Staff has included in the resolution Condition Number 1.11 to prohibit any apartment rental or leases that are not long-term. In conclusion, the project meets the applicable development standards for the CR zone, including FAR and building height, and does not include any legislative changes. Specifically, the CR zone is intended to create high-density commercial and mixed-use structures in key locations in the city. This is designated for properties that are principal commercial activity centers, and land uses in these areas may serve local as well as regional market areas. By balancing, I'm sorry, by replacing the auto and miscellaneous retail with a mixed-use project, the eastern gateway to the city will be invigorated and welcoming to pedestrians, tourists, and other visitors. While the building is taller than the developments in the immediate area, it does not exceed code. It is not out of context or character with other existing or allowed buildings within that portion of Santa Monica and La Brea. And the project conforms to the West Hollywood general plan and is proposed as envisioned by the general plan for this site. Overall, it's staff's assessment that the proposal is well-suited for this site and the surrounding neighborhood. In light of this, staff finds that the proposed project would be a positive addition to La Brea and the city of West Hollywood. And therefore, it is recommended that the commission approve the project request, subject to the findings and conditions of approval set forth in your draft resolution. Before I conclude, I want to mention that there was an oversight in the hours of operation table that I'd like to clarify. Staff generally recommends that sales and service of alcohol be allowed until 1:30, last call if you will, but 2:00 AM for consumption. I realize that that didn't come across in the staff report, so I'd like to recommend that amendment to reflect that. And lastly, we received four additional correspondence after the staff report was published. Three letters were in support of the project. The fourth letter did not express an opinion one way or the other, except that the letter expressed concerns with the city lacking space for industrial uses. The letter also referenced a property within the city of Los Angeles, three blocks south, claiming that it's on the Santa Monica Fault. Staff looked into this matter and concluded that the project site is not identified within the referenced fault according to the city's fault location and precaution zone map. And with that, this concludes my presentation. We have the project applicant, the architect, as well as the city's CQ consultant and traffic consultant as well.
Great. Thank you, Tony Castillo. We appreciate that. Any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Buckner?
Antonio, with regard to the sale of the alcohol, you say that it's going to be cut off at 1:30. That was only in the lounge upstairs, correct?
The alcohol, the request and what was...
They requested 2:00.
They requested 2:00, correct. Staff recommends that the sale and service end at 1:30 throughout the building, both restaurant as well as the lounge.
Okay. The chart is at 11.4. Is that what you want to correct?
The, that would be...
Page 33 of 38.
The table on...
It's page 12 of 14, right?
Page 12, there you go.
Oh.
Yes.
And the resolution is...
That would be Resolution Condition 11-4.
Four, right.
Yes, thank you.
So you're going to restrict it to service until 11:30, right? I mean, to 1:30.
1:30 for sale and service is...
So what would change?
And 2 for consumption.
Sorry. So what would change in this table?
What would change is that the 1:30 AM daily would apply only to the sale and service. Consumption remains to 2:00 AM as requested.
And so the live music would also be 2:00 AM?
Correct.
So they're requesting alcohol permits for the top-floor venue and for the ground-floor venue. Any other alcohol permits, mini-bars, things like that?
Yes, there would be ancillary sales of alcohol for the restaurant itself.
The room service at type 42?
For, I'm unclear which type that would be, but...
Ancillary, oh yes, you said ancillary.
For the restaurant component, then there's the lounge and the lounge, indoor lounge and the sky lounge on the ninth floor.
Restaurant dining.
Those two venues, or is that one venue?
No, it's one restaurant with a central kitchen that will serve the entire building, including the fifth-floor amenity deck, the room service, and the mini-bars within the hotel units.
It all could be consistent now.
So how many permits are they in total?
It's, well, there's, the project is split up in a minor conditional use permit for the alcohol to the restaurant and the conditional use permit for the hotel.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. Let's move on to disclosures quickly. Sue, I'm going to start with you.
I have no disclosure.
I met with the applicant, discussed items contained within the staff report.
I met with the representative of the applicant's team, and I discussed items in the staff report also.
I visited the site and had a meeting with the applicant's representative. We contained items, discussed item contained in the staff report.
I spoke with the applicant, and we discussed items contained in the staff report.
I visited the site.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to the applicant's presentation. Again, when coming up to the podium, please do state your name and city of residence. You will have 10 minutes total for your presentation.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, members of the public. I'm Clyde Wood, City of Los Angeles. I'm with CIM. We are the project developer and owner. Also here with members of the design team here who can answer other specific questions at the end if you have any. We're very excited to be here, to present to you for your consideration this project, Mixed Use Hotel at La Brea. The project before you represents a culmination of over a year of effort among us, the design team, several of you going through the DRB process, staff, certainly staff, and the community to create a new landmark for the east side of West Hollywood. Before we set out for this project, we had three goals in mind. One, and I'm going to go to the first slide, is we recognize there's a gap in the hotel market. Those circles are a half-mile and a mile. There's a lot of talk about the hotel boom and how many hotels are being developed, but the truth is, within a mile radius of this site, there are none. The majority of all the new full-service hotels are either in Hollywood or the west side of the city. The second point, and this is very important to us, is consistency with the general plan. And when the city went through and embarked on the process of updating the general plan, we view our project as implementing that vision. And for that reason, we are not asking for any legislative discretionary actions, no zone changes, no variances, no deviations, no specific plans. We are 100% compliant and responding precisely to the objectives of the general plan in this instance. And we also have a unique opportunity where this slide shows, very unusual for the city of West Hollywood, we are not surrounded by any residential uses. All the blue is commercial, retail, or industrial. The only residential use within a 600, that's a 650-foot radius, by the way, is the new Dillon at the northwest corner of Santa Monica and La Brea. So we have a situation where we're not surrounded by sensitive receptors, which I think is definitely a benefit for this project. We enhanced the pedestrian environment. We are replacing a decidedly car-centric use, an auto repair facility, with a mixed-use hotel project. And on the ground floor, you have lobby, restaurant, outdoor dining that engages La Brea. Also importantly, we're not displacing any precious housing. And finally, we do a lot of work within a two-block radius, CIM does, and there has been a lot of development on the east side of the city, but that's entirely residential, retail, and commercial. We view a hotel hospitality use as kind of the final piece to create a real mixed-use urban village in this transit-oriented district. And then the third goal is stunning design. Design is subjective, but this is where Neil Denari of Neil Denari Architects comes into play, and I'd like to invite him up right now to walk you through the highlights of the architecture. Thank you.
You have 6 minutes 50 seconds.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Neil Denari. I'm a Los Angeles resident, and I am the principal of Neil M. Denari Architects. The staff report, I think Antonio made was quite comprehensive, and I think I just want to embellish a few points and amplify certain terms. We have always thought of this site, as long as we've been working on it, as a gateway site. And I think this mark between LA and West Hollywood is a chance to really make a building that signifies this threshold in the urban field. When you look to the west on Santa Monica Boulevard, we see a building, obviously, that creates a strong urban presence and one that we think acts as a civic marker. The building is not only, and the massing is not only shaped by the issues of urban identity, which I think is very important, but obviously by the internal logic of its mixed-use program, which is actually readable, I think, on this north facade. And as it's already been stated, the general plan, I think, anticipates a greater level of density. So we want the project to fit in and stand out at the same time. Thinking about building as an architect is for now, but it's also for the future. And here's the existing context. Three to four taller, larger buildings have been constructed in the area. And when we think about the adjacent sites to our project and what that means, we go from essentially a building that in every way needs to be responsive to the present as a gateway project, but also in the future as an infill building. The view from the north to the south on La Brea suggests one main thing, which is when you look at the image in relation to existing housing and architecture north of Santa Monica, this building starts to balance out the massing and essentially anticipates the idea of a greater level of urbanism in the city. From the south, the building expresses, I think, clear ambitions to create an urban interface on La Brea. It's a hybrid kind of massing. It's an L-shaped residential form that sits in front of a four-story parking garage. It responds to the site, therefore, in front and back through modulated building heights and by placing program in places where we can capture views, internalize infrastructure, and enliven the street. Edge planting, lighting patterns, graphics on the south elevation party wall are designed to engage the eye really from close and far distances. We have designed a pattern, a kind of fluid floral pattern, I would say, and urbanized it into shades of gray that essentially connect to the type of planting that will cascade down from the terrace above. I think an important view, of course, is this idea that there'll be more and more pedestrian activity as much as there might be automobile activity. We can see, I think, here how the building will address smaller-scale urban features such as a newly paved alley that would, we hope, go all the way from end to end of the block and, as it suggests, potential pedestrian connectivity. The parking blends into the existing at present industrial fabric of the neighborhood, while the balance of the massing addresses the articulation of the urban corner. And even here in this view on Sycamore, further to the south, the view of the hotel shows this kind of articulated world of an elevated garden, the grain and scale of a housing project, and the warm light coming from inside. We think even from this vantage point, the building aims to contribute to this idea of the gateway concept for West Hollywood. In terms of the main facades that compose the urban interface, we sought to make a very refined building using formal nuances, discreet but effective lighting, and high-quality materials. We've modulated the massing, as you can see throughout, to introduce vertical furrows of light that break down the building into an appearance of a series of smaller volumes. Sloping radial corners produce a softness that really acts as a kind of counterpoint to the regular grid of windows and balcony openings. This is actually a very challenging site. It's very tight. It's 130-foot square approximately. It's compact for development of a hotel. And I think that's actually been converted into a curious opportunity. At the ground floor, the restaurant is really our primary public interface, and its support spaces occupy the southern part of the site, while the automobile access, drop-off, and valet are to the north. So we've squeezed in between all the loading areas and the parking ramp, and they're concealed within the middle third of the site. I should also note that parking will be valet-operated 24 hours a day, with residents only having the option to self-park on levels two and four. And the usage of the two-way, single-lane ramp to the basement is strictly limited to valet operation only. The ground floor, we've paid a lot of attention, and we've worked with the urban designer and his comments, as well as the design review board, to make a space that we think is sculpturally vibrant and a people space that would serve on the left here on the north side in hotel guests moving into and out of the hotel, as well as restaurant guests and passersby, obviously, along La Brea. The white tile, along with the low-luster silver aluminum, does speak to the industrial past of the site, but is here used in refined ways. The valet drop-off is a big part of the project in terms of not only solving it infrastructurally, but also, I think, architecturally. We've worked with the transportation director of the city, as well as our own parking consultant, to consider all these things very closely. The drop-off occurs within the site boundary, which is important, and that's shaped our thinking about the architectural experience of the space. Three columns set back from the building facade mark the valet drop-off. Fifth-floor terrace.
I believe we're at time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Just questions at this time before we move on to public comment? Okay. No, if not, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the public hearing. David?
Our first public speaker is Ken Balser.
Great. How many public speakers do we have?
We have four.
We have four. So let's allow everyone the full three minutes, if that's okay. Thank you. Is it three or two? Sorry. It's three.
My name is Ken Balser. I live in Los Angeles. I own a building at 1041 North Orange Drive. It's essentially two blocks east of this exciting new project, and I'd like to state that I'm delighted to be here tonight to speak 100% in support of it. I've owned my building for 35 years, and when I arrived in this location, the term that I use, the area was a little bit less than exciting. That has changed dramatically, I'm happy to say, and I'm, of course, delighted to see that all evolving the way it has. I see this project as being transformative. I'm excited about it. I've been excited about it since I first heard about it over a year ago, and I can only say, let's move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexander Basley, followed by Richard Maggio.
Hello. Hi there. Alexander Basley, West Hollywood, California. Very nice to see all of you. Wanted to support the city staff recommendation to move forward with this project. As general manager of West Hollywood Gateway, the shopping center next door, I can tell you, we are all very delighted to hear about this project. Undoubtedly, it will help the attractions on the east side, like the legendary Formosa Cafe, which is part of West Hollywood Gateway, which will be opening up early next year. We have Saved by the Max, one of the most raved-about, insta-spammed pop-up restaurants in the nation right now. So just a lot of attractions on that part of town. And as the CIM presentation alluded to, there are just no other options for hospitality around there or hotel stays unless you're going into Hollywood proper and one of the converted motels that they have up there. So again, I think this would be great for La Brea. I'm sure all of you are aware that great street of Los Angeles is having a revitalization with the metro opening up on La Brea and Wilshire, maybe someday in West Hollywood on La Brea, you know, whatever line it may take. We've got District La Brea Shopping Mall down the street, which is doing very well, new mixed-use product coming up all over La Brea. So I think this sort of project just fits right in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Maggio, followed by Genevieve Morle.
Hi. Good evening, Richard Maggio. I guess I could start by saying I've lived my entire life west of La Cienega. And now for the last year, I've lived east of La Cienega, close to La Brea. And it's a very challenging area, and I'm excited that there has been so much new development. We have to step it up. We have to go further. This project truly is outstanding. It's beautifully designed, and it will provide a tremendous amount of commerce to the area. I actually only have one major problem with it, and that it is not tall enough. It should not be nine stories. It should be 12 stories. That would provide certainly more revenue for the city and the hotel because of the hotel rooms. And of course, I'm always looking for angles when it comes to more apartments and homes. And I think that is a perfect opportunity here to create even more, absolutely more. I hope that could happen. Thank you very much. And to the designers, wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker, Genevieve Morle.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Genevieve Morle, President and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. We are here in support of La Brea Hotel, and as the previous speaker said, it is a stunning architectural project, and hats off to the architectural team and the developer. As you know, we have a lot of critical GAC members that are architects, one that had a project before you just recently tonight, who also acknowledged the stunning architecture of this building. The chamber is excited to welcome a new hotel and residences and the restaurant to the eastern boundary of West Hollywood. As Alex Basley, who operates the West Hollywood Gateway, said, this is really exceptional. Most of our businesses on the east side have really talked about the need for this type of economic spur that will help. And while a lot of businesses are thriving, some are still struggling on the east side, some of the small businesses. And so this would really encourage and transform this important gateway for West Hollywood. Besides the benefits that were mentioned before, we believe that this is also going to spur a lot more, obviously, more jobs, more economic spending. And I want to address one of the misnomers that we believe is out there about the so-called oversaturation of hotels in this area. If anyone attended the recent Travel and Tourism Summit that our Travel Tourism Bureau just hosted recently, these are not the disruptors. New hotels are not the disruptors in this market. And we need to continue to allow more into the marketplace with all different types of product. What the research shows right now is that there is plenty of room for this demand. And as the developer pointed out, the east side is in dire demand for a type of project like this, the type of uses of a hotel. Last year, we had 1.7 billion in tourism spending in our little 1.9-square-mile town, and there's still room for more growth. If we allow, if we don't allow more hotels to be built in West Hollywood, they will build on our borders. La Brea, this project is right on the border of Los Angeles. They just need to go down a couple blocks and build it, and then we'll be competing with hotels surrounding us, and we won't even gain the millions of dollars in the TOT that we would gain from this project. So we really encourage you to not lose out on this exceptional opportunity and help to support this project and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal, should you choose to rebut.
Clyde Wood, City of LA, again, CIM. I don't think there is anything really to rebut. We appreciate the support. We did a lot of community outreach. I think you can tell that with nothing but support and no opposition. So we hope that you support our application as recommended by staff. And just for the record, we are supportive of, even though we didn't get everything requested, we are supportive of the reduced hours that staff has suggested for the alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to close the public comment portion of this public hearing, and we will move into deliberation. Commissioner Guy?
You know, we had several chances to review this project at design review, and I think it's, as far as the design and the use and, you know, everything that was mentioned tonight, it is a wonderful project. I have two concerns, one that sounds like it's addressed and one that I want to kind of discuss further. One of them is making sure that the residential units in the project are for actual long-term use, i.e. not 31 days or more, so we don't have another issue à la, aka, which it sounds like we resolved. My other concern is with Condition 8.11 requiring that any substantial modification to the exterior finished materials beyond the design be considered by the planning commission. That, you know, that any changes beyond what we agreed tonight, substantial, come back to us. My concern hinges on the word substantial, because then it just, if I'm not mistaken, it would be at the director's discretion as to whether or not it's substantial or not. And not to say that we don't trust the director. We always, we love our staff. It's just that we've had issues with this applicant in the past as far as material changes and their projects. So I don't want to leave that to interpretation. I think if there's any change to the facade, it at the very least has to come back to design review, at which point, you know, it'll be at the discretion of design review as to whether or not to kick it up to, is that something we can do to kick it back to commission or city attorney? It's just, I don't want a situation where all of a sudden, you know, we're bootstrapping a series of changes and it's a different project, kind of like what happened on Sunset La Cienega.
I would concur.
Yeah, let me think about some language while we continue to...
Sure. That's just my main concern. Otherwise, I think it's a wonderful project.
Commissioner Hoping-Garner?
Yeah, I have a big circle around the word substantial and how to define it. As the applicant was speaking and...
Commissioner Hoopengarner.
Yeah, I have a big circle around the word substantial and how to define it. As the applicant was speaking and rhapsodizing about the beautiful rounded corners, which I think are lovely, if that came back in final plan check with square corners, would that be considered substantial? And to me, that would be more than substantial. It's a fundamental change to the design. And I could see something like that happening. Ooh, it's too hard to bend the metal, or, you know, whatever. Contractors tell you they can't do something, so the design changes to accommodate the materials, et cetera. And that, to me, would be a significant change. And I personally would say, comes back to full planning, not design review. But I think we have to get around this word substantial. And how do we define it and/or remove it and replace it with any change to the exterior? Because I would agree with 100% with Commissioner Guy. I actually pulled my Sunset Millennium DEIR out of the box this week because my memory of what that original approval looked like turned out to be correct. It was substantially different than what is now sitting on that corner. And I think that's what we, both he and I are very clear about, wanting to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Commissioner Bass?
How about the words exceptional and extraordinary instead of substantial? Now, I just, I appreciate that others are getting hung up on words. I think any change, that was a joke. I don't think those are the right words. But I don't think any changes are the right words. I think we need to find something else, because, you know, if they change a light fixture on the outside. So I don't know where that is, but I agree that there has to be a level somewhere between any and substantial, and I leave it to smarter people than me. Other than that, I've got to say, I agree with what the public comment was on this. I think that it is a remarkable project that will invigorate our east side. And as an east side resident, I am just thrilled to think that this is coming to our part of West Hollywood. So when we figure out what word comes between any and substantial, I would be happy to move staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Altshuler.
I agree with the rest of the people up here who point out that this, too, is an extraordinary or exceptional example of architecture in the commercial way, whereas the Larrabee was, not Larrabee, what was it? Residential one we just heard, was an example of exceptional, extraordinary architecture in the residential way. My main concern originally was the business about the traffic impacts and that why wasn't there some kind of a focused DIR on traffic and circulation? But in consultation with some people involved in the matter and in discussing it with some of the city staff members, I do think that given this mix of uses, there most probably will not be any significant impacts into the existing rather, as we saw in some of these pictures, rather bumper-to-bumper traffic that masses up on Santa Monica and La Brea at certain hours of the day. I was originally thinking of maybe suggesting some kind of a traffic review at some point in the future, but is that possible, Lauren? Would it be doable to look at a traffic review sometime in the future if in fact there does appear to be substantial impacts to traffic that might need mitigation, say, a year in or a year after occupancy, given this mix of uses?
Yeah.
I think that they've, with the valet and with the residents going in another entrance in the back on a different level, I don't think there's going to be that much.
Well, that's why I don't think we need to have one now. But if this gets to be the hottest restaurant and bar in town, what might happen?
Well, we do always have authority under the code to bring use in for a modification of their permits or conditions if the conditions aren't enough to remedy any land use impacts.
Okay. I'm fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Buckner.
Yeah. I'm the only one who hasn't spoken. I, too, think this is a very nicely designed building. I agree that we need to make sure that there aren't changes in the basic design, the architecture, because that's what makes it so special, and it is a gateway, at least at this point in our city development, for that east side of the city. And I think the substantial is not only the design, but which includes the materials. I don't want to see a change in the materials because, as we move forward, because I think that was the problem up on Sunset. So I don't know. How are you doing there, Lauren, on the language? Some language, yeah.
I have an idea, but it sounds like you have one first. Go for it.
Well, I was just going to point out that Condition 811 is just talking about modifications to exterior finished materials. So if that's all we're talking about, I think taking out the word substantial is fine. If we're talking about a longer list of things, maybe we should talk about what design elements we're actually thinking need to come back to planning commission and be a little more specific.
So, for example, sorry to jump in. For example, these folds are beautiful, you know, Mr. Denary did a wonderful job with the design. If for whatever reason, all of a sudden, those are gone and the material's the same, that's also a concern, right? Because then we don't know what's going to happen. So one thought I had is, you know, if there are any changes to the facade, coming back to design review is not, I don't believe, extremely onerous. And if it's something that, you know, within the wisdom of, you know, three of us, whoever they are, three of us, is, you know, genuinely minor, it can go on. But if we think it's a major issue, we might have the purview to kick it up to the full commission.
I think that the word that's tripping us all up is substantial. Is that what a reasonable person would think would be a substantial?
And not just limited to the material, but any changes to the exterior facade.
But the exterior, I think, is what we're really concerned about, because I certainly get that building and safety might say, "This hallway has to turn here," or, you know, "The elevator has to be wider there." And I wouldn't, from my opinion, wouldn't say that we need to have any conversation around that. They want to move a room a little bit here or there, that would be fine. But the thing that the community is going to see is this picture right here. And if this picture right here on our screen is going to change, it should come to design review, in my opinion.
I think one of the reasons that there would not be any kind of changes that we might rail against is that there is no signage on this building, and there's no provision for any signage on this building, which I think is a very good thing.
Yes.
So I think we probably won't see anything that we would object to.
So clean.
Hopefully not, but if, in case there is, I think it would be safer for it to be in our purview.
Okay, so.
That's why it's beautiful, because it's not messed up. It's clean looking.
So let's work, okay. Condition 811 says, "At the applicant's expense, the project shall return to the planning commission." And we could say, "Planning Commission Design Review Subcommittee." And if Subcommittee determines to the full commission for review and approval of any modification to the exterior design, including finished materials and exterior design elements beyond the design considered by the planning commission on September 6, 2018. Does that list?
Correct. I would be in support of that, assuming.
I would agree.
Yeah, just, I'll, sorry. Yeah, public, well, actually, it's not closed, because we haven't called the question yet. I'm going to make a comment, and then I'll call you back to the podium, since I haven't closed the public hearing. I'm generally in support of the project. I did review the resolution language to ensure that we don't get into the same quandary or situation that we found ourselves in with Corman. And it does indeed state that, it defines long-term as, I believe, a minimum of one year. So I'm in support of that. I'm actually really excited to have other hotel options on the east side. And I will say, this is very rare. I think a lot of people probably don't even recognize this particular plot of land as a part of the city of West Hollywood. But the considerations that we normally have to make, especially as regards kind of residences and adjacent residential or other uses, we really, we don't have to make here, which makes this a little easier for us. I am, for one, I'm comfortable, and it sounds like most of my colleagues here are as well, that this goes back to design review if there are any changes, as was noted by the city attorney. This had actually already been through design review three times. So I think I have full faith in that body to, at their discretion, either approve it if there are changes that need to be reviewed, or pass it back to full commission. So, and with that, I will call Mr. Wood back up to the podium.
Hi. Thank you. By the way, we're flattered with this line of questioning, because it means you guys really like it and you don't want it to change at all. So, and that's why we came back three times at DRB, because we are willing to specify the actual material that we're going to use, and we presented you with a sample. Any change is though, is a really high bar, because we're just in schematic design. You know, if we need to move a window this way or that, or a column needs to move, I mean, there must be a word somewhere between any and substantial, because totally get where you guys are coming from. We have no intent to change the design at all. But any is just a really tough word.
How about the word material change?
I was going to suggest material.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood.
Given your history on a couple of projects, I would go for the most restrictive.
And I would have to agree, because we, I remember Commissioner Altshuler and I experienced it on Sunset La Cienega, and it's just got to a point where the project wasn't what we originally intended, and it sounded like the changes are outside of our, outside the scope of our review, which we, and then we deal with that, we deal with blowback from the community when that happens, so it's not fair for us. So we want to, you know, it's an issue that we flagged, and, you know, yeah, I'm in support of what we've drafted.
Well, maybe the word material change, and I guess you're going to have to trust our design review not to be unreasonable.
Then what's material?
I guess it's just what's the trigger to come back to design review. Who determines the trigger to come back to design review? Plan checker?
It'd be the planner, right? Whoever your planner is on the project, so it'd be Mr. Castillo.
Then if it's Mr. Castillo, we would be comfortable with any, because we trust his judgment.
There you go.
I mean, to my pressure on Antonio, my point would simply be, this is what was presented to the public, this is what was approved by the public, this is what appears to maybe be approved by this planning commission, this is what the public should expect to see when the construction is done. Okay, moving a window inch here, inch there, that's not going to change it visually. Anything that changes this visually is a change, in my opinion. With that said, I did have one more question for the applicant. Speaking of visually, on two sides of this building, on the ground floor to the fourth floor, you have a solid wall that from the designs appears to be painted in a pattern. Being a realist and being, having lived in this city for a while, there's this thing called graffiti. And A, obviously, you can use anti-graffiti paint, et cetera, et cetera, which has limited efficacy. Do we have anything in the resolutions that would require that to continue to look like it looks in the plans over the years and how it's maintained, et cetera, given that it's just a painted surface?
One of the facades includes a mural, a painted mural, and that is part of the proposed and potentially approved design. So that, staff would see that as any other material change to the overall design of the building.
No, I'm not talking about initially. I'm talking on an ongoing maintenance basis. So in other words, if, I don't know if you have the picture here, but, or what page it's on, but they have this, sort of looks like hourglass, interweaving, hourglass murals on two of the walls. And it's a substantial mural. It's four stories. And it's street-facing. So the question is, how is that conditioned to continue to look like it does in its approval, et cetera, et cetera, in year two, in year three, et cetera?
We can certainly add a condition that the applicant maintain that in the state that it has been proposed tonight over time.
And I wouldn't have any opposition to it being another mural or something, but that it be maintained in a, in a fashion that is commensurate with the style and design of the building.
So it's the, so applicant shall maintain murals on the west-facing facades?
South and east.
Southeast.
South and east.
South and east.
Yeah, maintain a mural or maintain a mural, because it tastes change over years. They might paint something different 20 years from now.
They come to Arts Commission and say, "Hey, we have this new muralist, and we want to do a thing and a thing." I don't have any problem with that, as long as it stays fresh and lively and in the context of the building and the neighborhood. But that it degrades over time, that it fades over time, that it gets covered in graffiti and not maintained, that would be my problem.
If, I would move staff's recommendation with the modified Condition 8.11 and, as read by our city attorney previously, as well as the condition that the mural be maintained.
I would do a new Condition 815, because I think that's design requirements for the murals. So applicant shall maintain murals on the south and east-facing facades.
And that being said, I would move the item.
Second.
Commissioner Bass actually moved it originally, so we need a second.
Sure, but before we call the question, I'm going to close the public hearing officially.
Just making sure it's as amended, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Bass?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengarner?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner Altshuler?
Yes.
Commissioner Guy?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
And the motion passes, noting Vice Carvalho absent. The resolution the planning commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Sure. We're going to take another quick recess while people clear the room, and then we'll move on to our final public hearing, ZTA for allowable rooftop projections, item 10C.
item 10C.
All right. No, I think we do. We can lay down and stream that later. No, we.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
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 Can take up on the roof. So, the proposed amendment that's included in the draft resolution and the report includes these requirements in a really easy-to-read chart that kind of lists what is allowed, what are the features that are allowed, how much it can go up above the allowable height limit or the roof line, and how much it can take up on the roof. So, the specific standards that are within each row of the charts were based on the research on rooftop projection standards from nearby municipalities. We've received a lot of input from community members and also input from the Long Range Planning Subcommittee that we took this item to on August 16th, and their changes and suggestions were incorporated in the resolution you see today. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Garen. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengarner.
Yes, thank you, Garen. Could you please, I'm looking at the chart in Attachment A. Could you please explain to me the rationale between why on certain of these items you're measuring from the height limit, whereas on other items you're measuring from the roof line?
Sure. So, the three separate features that are in three rows that are allowed to exceed above the height limit are non-occupiable architectural features, chimneys and wind scoops, and then sustainable energy generation equipment. So, this would only apply if a project is not developed to the height limit, so those standards would apply to those. We felt like, based on kind of looking at projects that have been built, those are features that are more architectural, and those are features that could be kind of integrated within the building. Chimneys can be integrated, more sustainable features can be integrated within the building and are allowed to exceed above the height limit. So, that was the rationale that staff took with those distinctions, and we wanted to make it clear what those distinctions are.
And did you work through scenarios of how that might work?
We looked at examples from projects that were completed, and the reason for allowing for this to extend above the height limit for certain projects that don't exceed the height limit is allowing for that flexibility to create a really sustainable building. We've seen examples of projects where they have a lot of sustainable wind scoops and solar features that are just integrated within the building. We felt that this is an opportunity to allow for that to happen if a project would like to propose it.
Can we chat about the aggregation? Because based upon this chart, I see a scenario where we could have one of our five-bed, five-unit townhomes, each with a roof stairwell. So, 200 square feet per stairwell, times five, there's 1,000 square feet, plus another 5% for chimneys, another 5% for non-, 25% for non-occupables, and another 15% for mechanicals. The, not counting the stairwells, that's already 45% of the roof area. You'd have to do scenarios to come up with what the additional percentage would be for the stairwells. But, we're easily well over 50% of the roof now has projections on it. How does that work?
So, those specific standards were developed through looking at how other cities are looking at it and through some of the current projects that have come in. Those are currently similar to what we already have in terms of the percentage. It doesn't necessarily mean developers are not inclined to pack the roof with stuff. Everything adds cost in terms of the elevator and stair shaft. We wanted to keep it to just a square footage per elevator. A project will not add excess of elevators if they don't need to. For townhouse projects, they'll have the elevators needed, but the way that it's structured right now provides for that flexibility. It doesn't necessarily mean, and we've seen it from earlier projects, that 45% of the roof is going to be filled with all these things, and that, and when a larger project comes before you, I think that that's an opportunity for the commission to review a project on a case-by-case basis.
But, to legal, if it's in the code that they're allowed to have all of these things, the commission would have no discretion at that point, correct?
Right. If it's in the code, then they would be allowed to do it.
Okay. So, the mechanical is pretty much a mechanical. We're going to have mechanical. And so, there's 15% of the roof. And we start adding this up, and we're looking at a pretty significant amount of the roof and a large number of projections. I don't have necessarily any problems with some of, any of these individuals, but the aggregation of it becomes another whole story on the building. Related to that, my next question is, um, the reason for the removal on the setbacks and the, how this would prevent all of these projections being all along one side of a building?
Just to clarify, which removal of a setback are you referring to?
Well, we had the one-foot setback for every additional foot of height of the projections, and that's been removed.
I believe that that's regarding to the mechanical equipment requirement, so that-
Well, all roof projections.
So, we, for mechanical equipment, under other requirements, there is a provision that says it shall be set back from the edge of the roof line, a minimum of one-half foot for every foot in height above which the roof-
So, it's been cut in half?
Right.
The current standard. Okay. I'll let you go to, those are my questions for now.
Any other questions for staff at this time? No? David, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We have one public speaker, Edward Levin.
I think we can give you three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Edward Levin, resident of West Hollywood. I really want to thank staff for moving this item forward. Staff described our current ordinance as problematic. I think I would probably describe it as idiotic and unworkable. We allow 25-foot unoccupied steeples, but we restrict elevators to 10 feet, which means that we cannot use elevators because there is no elevator commercially available in the United States that'll work within that limit. This, we, right now, we have essentially a one-size-fits-all approach, and here we now have finally a way of being able to deal with the individual elements. We no longer have to go through the fiction when we have townhouses with stairs that are up against one wall because it's the only way to practically make them work, and to call them, "Well, it's an architectural feature. It's not really a stair," and that's our figly for getting around the fact that our current ordinance is completely unworkable. This makes sense. In the context of townhouses, in terms of modeling this, most mechanical equipment that's going to be scaled for townhouses isn't, is going to be so short that it's not going to clear the parapet. It's not going to even require screening because of that. Most of this is simply common sense and just reflects just what it takes to architecturally put a building together. Could someone load up the entire roof with this so that there was no actual usable area? Conceivably, but that's not what typically happens with projects. There's generally a balance, and what we're trying to achieve, what the staff's trying to achieve here and what we think we have here is something that's actually, in fact, workable. Now, what I would recommend specifically is on Attachment A, which is Page 4, subsection C, 1, there are two paragraphs which refer to design review. One refers to residential and the other refers to commercial. Those are unnecessary. They're redundant. There's no reason for them to be in there. You still retain discretionary approval of design regardless of whether someone's allowed to put a stair in or not. You still have control, and adding these paragraphs in there make it appear as though there's something special going on. There's not. And having redundant provisions in the code that reference in other parts of the code when they're not necessary is simply asking for trouble. It's simply asking for these to remain as just digital items when other things change. We have that in the code right now. We have a number of those things in the zoning ordinance. It refers to the Director of Community Development when we no longer have a Director of Community Development because we've changed the name of that department. When we came to you before on our easement on Romaine, we were, we could, we could get around it if it was deemed infeasible by the Director of a department that no longer exists. It's now two different people. So, we think that stuff like that, when it's not serving a useful purpose, should be removed. Otherwise, I urge you to pass this as is. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to close the brief public comment portion of this public hearing, and we will move into discussion and debate. Who would like to go first?
I will.
Lynn, go ahead.
I absolutely understand the architectural reasons for needing modifications in our rooftop projections. Totally get that. I think I was the one, a number of months ago, who brought up the elevator that claimed to be able to work within a 10-foot window, and it couldn't. So, with that, I think that the intent of many of these modifications is good. I have severe concerns about the aggregation, and perhaps a recommendation on how to address it. And that would be to, and help me with the right words, add a guideline that would state something to the effect that the aggregation of this, avoid the appearance of an additional story. Because much of why we had these rules was just that, to prevent the, from the street especially, but from all angles, from all viewers, avoiding the appearance of an additional story. Now, tonight, we saw a beautiful example of a stairwell projection on the front of the building that was integrated beautifully with the project, did not create the appearance of an additional story. Back to what I said earlier, it should be used as a case study of how to do these things. But, we are, as we all know, we're not always that lucky in the quality of architecture that we see. And so, these guidelines aren't, and this code is meant to address those things, and if this code is written in a way that we lose that discretion, that's where my concern lies. And it is about that perception of an additional story. If we look to Council's direction, it states that the objective is to reduce the impacts of commercial and mixed-use unadjacent properties. It's about the "well-scaled" are the words. And I just have visions of an architect seeing that, doing a soldier row of stairwells, projecting out of all of one facade, being their idea of well-scaled, and it's not. So, help me with language if my colleagues would permit something to say, "Avoiding the appearance of an additional story."
I have a suggestion. What if, and maybe this isn't possible, but what if, you're talking about the aggregate, if it reaches a certain benchmark it requires, it requires review. If it covers more than 50%, 60%, I don't know what it is, that it requires an additional level of review?
Well, certainly review, as opposed to what, under these guidelines, staff could approve, and that's a good point, that what has to go to planning versus what staff could approve. So, that might be a really good addition.
I just want to point out that the sustainable energy generate, sustainable energy equipment already has no limit. Under state law, we're not allowed to limit the area of solar panels, for example. So, a blanket percentage, unless we specifically included certain categories, could be problematic.
Yeah, I'd like to stay away from that if possible. I think we've run into issues with this kind of, I don't want to call it arbitrary, but in some cases, the numbers are arbitrary in the way of percentages, and I'd like to avoid that if possible.
So, I think, to me, it's back to the appearance of another story.
I have an unrelated, I mean, I have a question related to what Mr. Levin brought up. I agree that these two items seem redundant. Would it be, are you guys okay if we decide to eliminate them?
Yeah, we can totally eliminate that. It was just as a reference, but a project would still have to follow the guidelines identified in those sections.
You know, because I can see, like, you know, X number of years down the line, that reference not being applicable, and then us running ground like, ah, who's the, like he said, who's the Director of blah? And it's like, there is no Director of blah anymore. It doesn't exist. So, yeah.
I'm in alignment with that.
Thank you.
If staff's comfortable, which it sounds like you are, I'm amenable to that. Sue, you look like you want to say something? No? Anyone else?
Quite a bit in-
Long range.
Long range.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? As it stands right now, just, I'm going to put this out there, I'm actually inclined to support staff's recommendation with the removal of the two paragraphs that we talked about. But otherwise, I don't know that I feel that it needs to be further amended, but I'm open to further discussion on that.
Chair, I'm with you. I threw out the ideas, a way to maybe satisfy Commissioner Hoopengarner's concern, but I would be comfortable with it as is, with those two paragraphs being removed.
I was, just to be clear, my recommendation was not that it be a specific metric, that, but it be a design guideline to not create the perception of an additional story that would give commission the discretionary leeway to address particular issues-
Projections.
Design issues on projections, should they sort of go over the edge under these guidelines. And that's all I wanted to do, was give commission that discretion.
I want to defer to staff here. Is there a reason why we would not have included language to that effect in the what's in front of us right now? Or do you have strong feelings about including that?
I think, I mean, we didn't necessarily suggest that in this language, I think largely because it doesn't, to me, it doesn't feel like it's necessary. I think many of the feature, types of rooftop features here are not likely to appear to be an additional story. I understand the concern about sort of junking up the roof with too many things, but I think that many, the limitations on, within each type of addition to the roof, I think would help to address that. I mean, we're talking about, you know, open trellises and fire escapes and elevator shafts and sort of the aggregate of those things. I'm not sure would, it's hard to imagine a situation in which it would actually appear to be an additional story, but I think if that additional language is providing some comfort to the commission, should that happen, then I think that will be fine.
Well, it could happen if it's a small building and there's only, you know, on a narrow lot, and they have all these projections, it could do that.
I struggle a little bit with the perception.
Maybe design review could, I think that the concern is that if they follow the rule, then we have no discretion. That's the problem.
It's a fair concern, and I'm glad that it's been surfaced. I think, I struggle with semantics, but I struggle a little bit with whose perception? You know? I mean, really, though, it's, whose perception of, you know, an additional story, what does that look like? I don't-
But, that's what, that's what the commission would then have the discretion to discuss and review and vote on, but without that language, we would have no discretion, correct? Lauren?
That is correct because it's, well, there's maximum aggregate limits. As Bianca mentioned, there's step-back and step-back requirements, yes, but there's not an, you're not providing direction for an overall limitation on what it would look like, how it is implemented.
Not with this language.
Not as currently proposed.
Not as, not as what's in here, no?
They can do what's allowed in here, and so, and you'll see that. It's interesting that the suggestion was to eliminate the reference to the design guidelines because where my mind went when I originally heard that was, I mean, we could maybe shorten the reference to the design guidelines, but say, you know, there's applicable design guidelines, and it should be designed with, I actually thought the language you proposed was fine, if the commission's interested, avoiding the appearance of a full additional story. It just, I thought those two kind of worked together nicely.
Well, I think, yeah, it would seem like the design guideline would include that it should not appear to be a, an additional story.
Right. That's, if I were to write this, that's how I would write it.
Yeah, and you tell me where it would go, you know, does it go in this section, or does it go in the official design guidelines? What, I'm not married to that. It's the intent, again, of keeping that perception down of another whole story.
Commissioner Alchel?
The problem is, somebody is always going to have a perception-
Mike.
The problem is, somebody is always going to have a perception of an additional story, even if it's only two inches wide and two inches thick. That would, that gives it a reason to exist and to create a problem before there even is a problem. So, I don't think that particular language is appropriate, but I understand what you're trying to get at. I don't know how to quantify it in exact language because there are going to be people out there that are going to say, to five of us who live within a few blocks from here, it appears that there's an additional story to thwart the process. So, I don't think that is the right way to do it.
I understand Commissioner Hoopengarner's point, which I think is not like what, defining what the perception of a story is, but what, but giving us discretion to-
Discretion, exactly.
So, to that end, I would actually like to make a motion to move staff's recommendation with the deletion of the rooftop projection in residential projects and the paragraph about rooftop projections in commercial projects, those two paragraphs that have been referenced, with alteration to the language to the effect of, that we would, it would essentially give us discretion, I don't know how we would word this, Lauren, but give us discretion to, however you want to word it, or we can, I don't know, would we agree on the language tonight, or would this come back to us on consent? It has to pass tonight to be able to go to the ZTA, ZTA Palooza, as it's been called.
I think, we understand your direction pretty clearly regarding the appearance, we'll find a better word, of an additional story, and we can take that direction and reflect it when this moves forward to the City Council, if the commission is comfortable with that.
Okay. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Unless there's any further discussion, I think we can call the question.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Guy?
Yes.
Commissioner Alchel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bass?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoopengarner?
Yes.
Motion carries, noting Vice Chair Coverlal absent. There is no appeal process. This will be going to City Council on recommendation.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 11, new business, there is none. Item 12, unfinished business, there is none. Item 13, excluded consent calendar, we have no items. Item 14A is, well, items from staff. Item 14A is planning manager's update. Nothing at this time. Thank you, Bianca Siegel. Item 15, public comment, do we have any public comments?
We have one. Edward Levin?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. Edward Levin, resident of West Hollywood. I want to follow up on a part of the discussion earlier, which had to do with the setback averaging. I serve on a city commission, and we have the same tendency as you all do, which is to take direction from City Council and react to projects as they come. But, you do not have to do that in every case. You are allowed to agendize items when you think that there are some flaws in the ordinances that govern you. You can agendize a discussion of our current setback averaging. Does it make sense? Should we establish fixed setbacks? You are allowed to actually discuss this and make recommendations to City Council if you think that things, that changes in the zoning ordinance ought to be made, where you keep running up against specific problems. This is something you are allowed to do, and in a case of setback averaging, I would strongly encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Noted. Item 16, items from commissioners. Anything from commissioners at this time?
Sure. With listening to that, and I think we had a brief discussion, perhaps you could bring that back for a discussion, a policy discussion with, for the commission with regard to the setback averaging and the issues that have come up with regard to those variances. So, sometime when we don't have a busy calendar, which doesn't look like anywhere near in the future, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I brought that issue up earlier, and I was going to say the same thing, so thank you, Commissioner Buckner.
No.
Commissioner Hoopengarner?
Just one item for staff. On tonight's plans for the hotel, and this happened, I think, on Arts Club as well, the shade and shadow studies as presented were cut off. And so, the actual shade and shadow in the little vignettes that were presented ran beyond the box. And so, to me, that excluded the full shade and shadow. This happened, I think, on Robertson Lane as well, and so, I really would, for my own purposes, like to see the vignette, the box, cover the full shade and shadow. This particular hotel project also didn't include a winter equinox, which is when the most egregious shade and shadow occurs. So, I didn't belabor it because of the space, you know, and where it is and what's getting shaded and shadowed, but I think it's an important piece of information that should be included and included accurately. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The Planning Commission will adjourn to a regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, September 20th, 2018, at 6:30 PM here in Council chambers. Thank you for coming tonight.